I'd like to open the meeting, the Board of Education, Hyde Park School, Central School District. Today is Thursday, March 27th, 2014. It is now 5:33. I may have a motion to go into executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment, future employment, of a particular person or persons and student discipline matters.
So moved?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, I'd like to get going. May I have a motion to exit executive session, please?
So moved? Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, thank you. We're now in general session. At this time, I'd like to have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we have no agenda modifications for this meeting. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as listed?
So moved? Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. That brings us to pride.
Well, I'll start with a few things and then anybody else who wants to join in. I have a full winter summer sport, uh, winter sports summary, so if you'll forgive me, I'll read it because it's a, it's a pretty long list. Aviva, you didn't do this one yet, some of it?
I did a lot of things about sports.
Okay. Um, I know we covered, did we, did you cover the boys swim team? Things like that? Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead with this. If, if, if we repeated, the worst that's gonna happen is somebody got congratulated twice. But this, this is the end of the season summary for winter. The girls' basketball team finished their regular season with an 8-8 record, 5-3 in the league. By virtue of their record, they qualified for Section 9 tournament. The boys' basketball team finished their regular season with a league record of 4-2, highlighted by a thrilling three-point win over conference champion Sagertis. They also have qualified for Section 9 tournament. Ishmael Chizom, Ruben Hamanaz were selected first-team Mahal All-Stars. How do I do with the names, Dan? Okay. Thanks. The boys' swim team, which is the Marlboro Highland FDR team, had three FDR boys, Michael Craven, Nick Craig, and Robert Hoffman qualify for sections based on their impressive times. FDR, I know we mentioned this one, hosted the gymnastics sectionals. Amanda Midemeyer made it to states and she attended the state gymnastics meet on, in Brockport the weekend of March 1st. The bowling team finished second in Section 9 and had nine bowlers qualify for the state meet on Long Island on March 1st. Huge. They included Christian Schroeder, Zach Carey, Cody Piney, Sean Hubbard, Peter Schivalett, Brianna O'Brien, Lauren Height, Sarah Schlagader, and Megan Kozier. I really probably butchered a few of those. I'll have to, I don't have to read them off at graduation, so that's a good thing, the principals do. The cheerleading squad finished third in the New York State AA tournament held in Syracuse on February 8th. They also finished first in the Division II category and second overall at the John J. Invitational. They went down to the Reach the Beach competition in Ocean City, and as many of you may recall, we've had them here on several occasions. We will probably have them back because in Ocean City, Maryland, they came in first in Nationals. So for, I think this might be the third year in a row to reach Nationals, so that was great. And our JV team cheerleading came in third, also a great accomplishment. Bridget Levia, 2013 FDR graduate, recently received the Skyline Conference Rookie of the Year for her accomplishments in cross-country, and she attends Mount St. Mary College. And our indoor track team finished third in their respective division at the divisional meet held at West Point. So that's the winter sports summary wrap-up. Most of you already know we are in full swing for our spring sports, so please take the opportunity to come out and see our athletes. I do have to announce that on April 7th, we will have our first home track meet in at least 20, 30 years. I tried to get the number today. I don't have the specific number, so don't quote me on it. If you wanna quote in the newspaper, you can call me tomorrow. But it's been over 25 years, I believe. So on April 7th is the first home track event. I think we're gonna have a lot of people in tears. So that is certainly gonna be a big day. We've celebrated the opening of our athletic facility, but to actually see our students running on the track is going to be amazing. At our last board meeting, we talked a lot about our student performances, musicals, dramas. South Pacific was amazing. We could go on for a really long time about that, but it was truly, truly amazing. Ralph R. Smith had a very successful production. North Park Elementary had a successful production. It was Peter Pan and-
Alice in Wonderland.
Alice in Wonderland. And this weekend is Aladdin, the music, the Havland Middle School Musical. And Netherwood, did we get the information on Netherwood?
Spaghetti dinner is Friday.
Oh, their spaghetti dinner is Friday, but they're also having a student performance, and we'll get the details of that posted on the website. Mr. Wirt, do you-
Good evening.
Good evening. The date and-
The world premiere of Summer Camp Musical will be in our ice cream social in June.
Okay, so Summer Camp Music, Summer Camp Musical. This will be the first musical for Netherwood probably in many, many years, and it will be at their ice cream social in June. Thank you.
String Festival.
Yes, and Cora and I were away. I think this is the first string festival that we missed, so Doug, if you could comment on that?
Sure. It, it's always a pleasure to go to the, any kind of music or plays, those kinds of things. I especially liked the, the string festival this year because it was held at the high school, was 4th through 8th grade, and the 4th graders led off, well, they led off with a full everybody, 4th through 8th, playing a song, and then the 4th graders. But the reason I like it, the, this format was, A, you could tell the progression. You saw the 4th graders, then you saw the 5th grader, then you saw the 6th grader, then the 7th, and the 8th, and they got better and better and better. And I think it was good for the parents to see that, wow, you know, I'm suffering now, but there's hope. The other, the other nice thing that they, they started with the band festival is that all the students were also in the audience, so they got to see their friends play, and I think that's a wonderful addition to, it made it a little more crowded, you know? People, I stood up in the back, so, you know, it's, but I think the kids really got something out to see their friends play. So it was, it was a great night, and I would encourage anybody that is interested in, in kids or music to attend these kind of events.
Okay, I think that's all I had.
Okay, then, did you have anything you wanted in the superintendent's report?
Yeah, I had two items for the superintendent's report. The first is, and I see some parents in our audience, and so you probably should've received at least a phone call, a text message. We did publish our family engagement survey. The results are posted on our website. We did send out a school messenger because at the district leadership team, we discussed how do we get the word out, and we thought that since we use school messenger to encourage people to take the survey, this actually recommendation came from the committee members, and it was a great one, that we could send out one message, you know, not late at night or early in the morning, to say that the results are posted. A letter outlining the rollout plan for how we follow up on the survey results will be attached to the third quarter marking, the grade reports. So each of our buildings will be rolling out their building survey results next, at our next board meeting. I'll be talking to you about our district leadership team and the district survey results, and we look forward to really making some changes based on what we learned. The information that we received from parents is invaluable. A lot of great suggestions, a lot of ways to identify areas of improvement or areas where simply just doing a better job communicating could help, so I look forward to that. The next is, we had a good discussion at our last meeting about the opt-out policy and the state, and the predicament the state has put us in. But based on all resources available and parent input, we did change our plan, and so students who come in for the state assessments, which begin next week on Tuesday, April 1st, isn't that interesting? But I could just see the kid, "I opt out." No, April fools, no. Hopefully that doesn't happen, but they, at any rate, the state assessments do start next week on Tuesday, and to really respond to the needs of, of students and the situation, we're going to remain flexible in maybe where they're located, but they will be permitted to read if they choose, if they refuse to take the test. They will be permitted to read. If a student forgets to bring in a book, there's not a single classroom in our school that doesn't have some books around. We will provide the, the children with something to read. The area where we may remain flexible is to really kind of read the situation. For our elementary students, being removed from the class could be traumatic, so we're going to try and keep them in the class and give them something to read. Certainly at the middle level, if we have more students and it becomes disruptive, Eric has an alternate location. So we thank everybody for their feedback. We don't thank New York State for putting us in this predicament, but we really wanna do what's in the best interest of the students and certainly respect the, the options that they've been given.
So can I just ask one question? When we talked before privately, I believe you said that the part of that flexibility would give the principal of the school the opportunity to change on the fly, should keeping the students in the classroom prove to be disruptive, they will adjust. So it's not a, when, when you, when you said flexible, it's flexible right up to and including during the test?
Sure.
Okay.
You know, you just, you can't predict what, what's going to happen in that situation and how children might react, so.
Okay.
Yes, that's it, I think that's it.
Moving along, good. We're now at 6.2, and we will now have the program component of the budget.
And while Cora's setting up the program portion of the budget, well, I just wanna remind everybody that we are staying within our tax cap. We will remain at our tax cap this year. We're not going to exceed it, our, which is 2.3%.
2.03.
2.03%. Exactly, yeah, that's a big difference.
Yeah, a big difference.
Sorry, 2.03%. Also, I just wanna remind people that when we get to our final budget, one of the things we committed to last year was to also do a little pride piece to show people what all of the programs are. What is it that our budget finances? So that will be added into our future budget presentation. So Cora, take it away.
All right, thank you. Whoops, let's see. I just wanna make sure we start at the very beginning. Take me back up, if you would, Wayne. Keep doing that. There we go. So just as a reminder, we are talking about the program component of the budget, and that part of our budget includes really everything having to do with instruction and teaching. All of our textbooks, curriculum development, our services for students in need of special education. It does include benefits, BOSI's transportation and legal services. And the first thing that we've provided is just a three-year comparison. You can see there the fluctuations in that part of our budget over the last three years. I'm not going to address all of these, but as you can see, there are a number of areas where you see a red number or a reduction, and a few that have increases, which would be the items in black. And as you've heard before, some of our most significant increases are in the areas of health insurance, TRS, and ERS. Those make up almost all of the additions to that line of the budget or to that portion of the budget. Payroll taxes coming as a close second to all of that. Again, I won't read all of these too, but I did want to highlight just a couple of things. In the second line, you see the reference to in-service training, and we have talked quite a bit, both in our administrative meetings and in cabinet, about some ways that we can still provide meaningful and important professional learning opportunities for our staff, but to do that in a way that might provide us some more fiscal efficiencies. So one of those is to decrease some of our participation in COSRs with BOSI's. And then along the same line, in the next category, you'll see a plan for reducing the budget for subjects, and in part, that's related to our mileage and conferences. So our hope is to focus on those professional learning opportunities that we identify as being the greatest priorities. We already do a great deal of that during our school day with our own administrators, serving as facilitators, but we're planning to take a closer look at those occasions where people are leaving the district and perhaps having less influence on teacher practice and student outcomes than we might hope for. So we'll be changing some of our practices there. The last section there that references occupational education is an increase to our BOSI's programs, and that's associated with new requirements for supporting our students with disabilities and in particular, students who are pursuing an IEP diploma. And if not this evening, by way of your questions, I think at another time you'll be hearing more about that. I think that's also been referenced, Aviva, in journals to the board. The second section of this, of this slide is one that I would draw your attention to. Certainly, the board's been very involved and supportive of the enhancements to technology that we have planned for the district, and within that conversation and speaking about all of the requirements that need our technology support, whether it's data or new assessments or new phones, whatever all of that is, has really resulted in a need for additional support within the technology department. So there is a plan for an additional position there, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Some of these increases are relatively standard. Again, I won't take you through all of them. We do have, again, that note around the employee benefits as being an overall increase and one that you've, you've heard much about over the last few months. I have to say that it's a little bit easier to stand up here this year than it's been in the last several years because the list of reductions is much shorter and the impact on our employees is, is much different than it has been in the past. You've heard already a reference to the change in the administrative position at the high school. The dean of positions was created last year, intended to be a one-year position, and in fact, that position is, is coming to an end this year. So that is one reduction. At the elementary level, in each of our four elementary buildings, we will have a reduction in sections, so there are four sections fewer for elementary education and one less reading teacher. In each of those cases, that will happen as a result of retirements, so there are no teachers in that category who will be accessed. We do have some part-time teaching employees within the district. Part-time teachers are hired on a one-year basis. There is a start and end date, and as we've looked at our enrollment and program needs there, we've identified the three positions that you see listed there as being appropriate reductions. We are reducing by three the teaching assistants, and I'll elaborate on that in a second, but thereto, we anticipate that those will happen as a result of retirements and resignations. And I say anticipate because we have heard word of, of people's plans, but we don't yet have in hand letters to suggest either all of those retirements or resignations. The personnel additions are, are few and modest, and the first one I'll speak to is the AIS program at Havland Middle School. I think most of you are familiar with the model at the elementary schools for English Language Arts, which includes a number of reading teachers who directly supervise teaching assistants who support our program. At the middle school, we also have reading teachers and we have teaching assistants. We have just one math-certified teacher providing AIS. And over the last several years, we've talked about the wonderful service that our teaching assistants provide. However, we've also had concern that because we've not seen the improvement in math performance that we would like, we need to put as many of those students as we can for AIS in front of a certified math teacher. So this is the change that we're making that is resulting in the reduction of teaching assistants that you saw on the previous slide. You might recall that a few years ago, our SRO at the middle school was full-time. A reduction was made, and we are recommending at this point that we return that position to full-time. One of the issues that I'm sure some of you understand and are fully aware of is that our two school resource officers, although they are housed at Havland and FDR, are often called upon to support things that are happening in other buildings. And that happens often enough that it causes us to be concerned about their absence from the buildings to which they're assigned. So that's in part the reason for the recommendation to bring that back to full-time. As I mentioned, we're recommending an addition to the technology department staff, and in part, that position will be funded by a reduction in our BOSI's COSR. We currently have a part-time BOSI's employee who supports the technology department. We'll be eliminating that service through BOSI's and using those funds to help fund a new full-time position. Greer mentioned the track at the high school and our wonderful new athletics facility, in part to support all of the things that are going to be happening in there, and in part to support other needs at the high school. We are adding a point two, which basically means the equivalent of one day a week, a groundskeeper at FDR, and that person and others will be supporting things that happen outside of the traditional school day or school week. So this is just a summary, again, of the components of the budget. You see the administrative budget, the program, the capital, and then the total. And again, I, I won't read to you, but you can see what percentage of the budget each of these represents. And for the 14, 15 school year, the program budget represents almost 78% of the overall budget, and that's comparable to what it's been in the last few years. As you've heard, our, our general operating budget proposed for next year is just over $87 million. Probably the most important note on this slide is the last one, which references our gap. And I should say again that the budget process is still in development. We still have work to do. There's news happening every day. The governor's budget has not yet been adopted. We're, we're hoping for good news there. But as I leave you tonight, we are still with a gap of $261,000, and there are a number of ways that that gap may be reduced or eliminated. One of those, hopefully, is the governor's budget. We're, we're hopeful that by the end of the day tomorrow, there'll be a budget that can be voted on and approved in time for the April 1st deadline, so we'll, we'll come back to you with all of that news. Certainly, we still have the option of going back to all of the budgets that have been proposed by our administrators and consider additional tightening there. I will say, there's been a lot of that already, but we can certainly go back there if we need to. And then certainly, the board has the option of considering additional fund balance or reserve considerations. But we do certainly, before we adopt a budget, need to close that gap.
Thank you, Cora.
You're welcome. Did you time me?
A-plus.
Okay, thank you. That's two meetings in a row. That's good.
Does anybody have any questions? For Cora, go ahead. Gary?
Yeah, Cora, on the TRS and the ERS, the increases seem pretty, pretty high. What's, what's behind that?
And I'll defer to Wayne on that.
Sure. It's, in TRS, it's not as big as it was in, like, last year, for example, but it's all of our teachers, anybody that's in the teachers' retirement system-
Privacy system.
-represents a, I believe it's a 17.56% increase, rate increase, and it, so I'll just look it up. I have the numbers here.
17.53.
17.53, right. And on the ERS, it's a blended rate, so again, it's all of our ERS employees multiplied by different tiers.
Right.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, Cora.
You're welcome.
I've got one more, please. It's about the salary base. I see we have a bunch of retirees coming up.
We do.
Twelve or 13, and God bless them, some of them are really long-term.
That's true.
Good for them. And you're eliminating five, so you're just replacing seven or eight, whatever it may be.
Correct.
What's the impact from hiring new compared to such a long-term employee that's making a lot more money?
Mm-hmm.
Was there, is there major there, or is the, I, I see also part of this is there's a retirement incentive-
Right.
-in there, so that probably might just balance things out or cancel things out this year?
Again, I'll refer to my colleague who can speak more about the impact. There certainly is one. You know, we typically like to think of it as a huge savings, but it's not the savings we would expect or realized as immediately as one would think, but I'll let Wayne elaborate on that.
Sure. As the number of retirees goes up, you're exactly right. For example, this year, we had to increase our teacher retirement incentive from $217,000 to $550,000 to offset the increases for those buyouts that do happen, so it's a good point.
So we may see a little-
Two years.
-better player this in a couple of years from now. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. We now would move to 6.3. We have a presentation on the Raptor system. Aviva?
So as many of you know, we have been using the Raptor system for visitors at the high school. And we talked about expanding, and that's in the budget to all our schools. It's been very successful there. And so this is just a very short presentation on the system, and then I can answer questions. Okay. These are just, this is some information from the company about all the states using the Raptor system. I'm not going to read this to you. This is just singing the praises of the system, you know, how well it works, and we can speak to that as well. Okay. Live customer support, that's been really helpful. And I can speak a little bit to, you know, that we've gotten all the support we need at the high school. We looked into a BOSI's coser because, you know, it's always good to see if we can realize some savings or get some support. And there was a big cost for support that they would offer for the program. And it was nice for us to be able to say that we really don't need that additional support, because the program really provides it. And there really hasn't been any hiccups this year. Oh, that's, I don't think.
I think you had less slides than we do here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, well, there's more. There is another one we haven't seen yet. So the system is really designed to do, to run through a national database on Level 2 and Level 3 sex offenders. That's it. Any additional things that we want to catch, serious custody issues, restraining orders, we have to put in by hand. So there was some concern initially, a presentation a few years ago, you know, what are they looking for? You know, is it going to be a parking ticket, that kind of thing? And it's nothing like that. I'm happy to say we have not had an offender come to the high school and had to deal with that, but we did go through sort of what our protocol would be for that legally and otherwise. And basically, that person would not have access to the school. They could come to the office and have a meeting, you know, about their child if it was a parent. Okay. This is a module that's available. We have not used that, you know, for signing in and signing out. We've used it for visitors only. Okay. Again, this is the background check that happens. And this has really taken the place of other kinds of badges and stickers and things like that, because it prints out your picture from your ID that you put into the system and what date and time you come to visit and where you plan to visit. Okay. Before I open for questions, I did want to answer one question that's sort of come to me already about what happens to your driver's license information as it scans it. So the first time you come to visit, it scans your driver's license. But what it captures is your name, your date of birth, the first four digits of your ID, and your picture. And it, so that when you put your name in next time, it just comes out more quickly. And I should say also that we currently, when any student registers, the parent has to bring their license or ID. We make a copy, and it sits in a cumulative file in the office. So we actually have a picture of everyone's ID already in hard copy. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm concerned whether or not that's legal, that you can keep all that data, even in hard copy, especially a picture and an address and an ID. It's got, there's a lot of information there that...
Right.
So we'd say unscrupulous people could use...
Well, all of student records are under lock and key in the main office. We have a lot of confidential information that we keep. I held residency hearings this afternoon and had to look back on how people prove residency in the first place. So I'm looking at copies of leases, have they run out, you know, driver's license, are you really the parent of this student?
I'm not worried about you.
Right, right. No, I'm just saying that we, those are ordinary student records that every school keeps. The importance is that we respect confidentiality. They're under lock and key. The only people who get that information are people that are allowed to have that information.
It seems odd that we have to get permission to have a child's picture shown on, in our systems or on our website, yet we can just grab a picture of any adult who comes. Seems like...
Right.
This is actually fairly common in business. I mean, if you go to, if you go to my company and check in at the main lobby, you go through a similar system, you provide the license, and then they scan it in so they can give you an ID card that you use, and it's basically in there forever once they got the picture. I don't know what data it captures, like the Raptor system does, but I know that returning vendors and visitors just have to say who they are, kind of show their ID, and then boop, they'll print out a card for them because they've already got the picture from the last go-around.
Okay.
And the thought process is, of course, in private industry, I recognize we're a public agency, but, you know, you want to visit our property, you follow our rules. And if you don't, you're not coming in, so.
So you only have designated staff that have access to that program?
It's not something we can look at. Like, they keep, it's a little box. We don't keep, we don't see that information. It's in the system.
It just prints it out?
It just prints out that one person's ID when they're there.
Like, they print a badge out.
Okay.
They just print the one badge. Raptor will keep that information until we tell them not to, is what he told me.
So it's really a no-go, no-go system. I mean, they scan the badge, they scan your ID, they run it through a database, and compare it to a set of requirements that we say, okay, this is, it's Level 3 and Level 4 typically?
Level 2 and Level 3 sex offenders, and that's all they do. There's only a national database for that.
Right. So they look, and if it's in, if you're in that database, you're going to come up and it's going to have a screen that's going to have a big X on it. Or in some way, it's going to tell you that those people are not able to enter. And then it becomes an administrative question. I think that there's an opportunity...
Right, which we worked out about what we would do, which is not allow that person access to the building.
Right.
And we looked into what rights, if that was a parent, what right would they have? And it was. They can have a meeting about their child, but not walk around the building. They can have a meeting in the office.
Not entrance into the facility.
But I think the additional thing that you get out of it, or at least I've observed, is that, you know, so the scan is done, so, okay, now you're allowed in. Well, then, an ID sticker, basically. You know, in the old days, when you, you know, not that long ago, but you got your little visitor sticker, and it was like one of those hello, my name is stickers, and you write your name on it and slap it on you, and out you go. Now you've got a photographic ID, so it's no different than the staff members that are walking around with the thing hanging around their neck with their identification. You know they belong there. Well, now, when somebody sees that you've got the sticker on with your picture on it, they know it's you, and yes, you belong there, and where you should be going, what destination, guidance office, or, you know, wherever you're going.
Right, so you can say, can I help you? You're going to the guidance office. Why are you over here?
Right. But at least you kind of know that they somewhat belong, as opposed to just somebody walking in off the street that has nothing on, you know.
And I should say, it also comes with a panic button, which is something we've talked about from the safety perspective. But it's programmed to whoever we say it's programmed to.
Because they're already in the building.
Right. So you can push a panic button on it, and it will call, you know, in the case of the high school, it's, of course, the SRO and building administration, could be Hyde Park Police, which in this case is the same thing. But at the elementaries, which we're proposing to have it as well, we could also hook it into our SROs.
Couple of questions. Are the badges, do they, are they printed with expiring ink in any way? Is there anything so that a badge couldn't be used on a subsequent day?
No, but they have the date and time.
Okay, so they've got a single date on it. So you've got to be able to read the date to know that they're...
Right.
You're a day or two late.
Right.
Yeah.
And we do have the hello, my name is in all the other buildings still, some form of that.
I'm curious, if it doesn't maintain a date, it'd be, so you go in the second time, or next week I come back, I give you my name, and then you print a badge. Does it actually run another clearance check? Or is it simply printing it? I mean, because, so what if I had a...
Officer Monaco, can you answer that question? Does it run a new check? In case something happened between last week and this week?
You know, it could be a month later, two months later.
Thank you.
Every time that you enter the building, it will run a subsequent check.
Okay.
And it saves into a database that is secured by Raptor. And we also can access it anytime, which is great for our records and for the assistance in law enforcement. Because if there's ever somebody who is entering the building, and we have questioned, well, when were they there? What time were they there? What was their business there? It's all on record for us, and we can be pulled immediately from a remote location if need be. As far as the security, I know you asked a question about that, having access to those files. The program is actually, has to be user ID and password protected for each employee that we deem, or the school district deems appropriate to gain access to that and have those ability to see that. So that's why it's a little more secure than you would think. Not anyone that just hops on that computer can get into that.
That's a good thing.
What about the others? When people leave the building, how do you, how you, you program a man, and they're in the building? How do you know when they're leaving the building, or if they're still there?
We do, we do have procedures in most of our buildings that you are supposed to enter through the main entrance and out of the main entrance. So as they're leaving, they're checking off, and it shows their checkout time. At the end of the day as well, it automatically checks everybody out.
Does that tell the program? Somebody has to tell the program, right?
Yes, yes.
What happens if somebody doesn't have a driver's license?
Oh, someone just asked me that question right back here.
If someone doesn't have a driver's license, it can be entered in hard form just by asking their name, date of birth, and maybe checking to see if they have a different form of ID that has a picture on it, so they could say, yes, this probably is this person. It will also take, it will take all 50 states driver's licenses, as well as military ID, and Mexico and Canada licenses as well.
Any concern, I mean, this is kind of, you know, Big Brother type of thing. Any concern about people who might be resistive to wanting, you know, their ID checked? You know, I would hate to think that some, you know, some father wouldn't come in, or mother wouldn't come in to see an activity in the school because they didn't want to go through such a database.
Well, as far as I know, that hasn't happened as a big issue at the high school, and we've had it now a year and a half.
I guess the point is, I'm not sure you wouldn't know. I mean, it's a kind of a philosophical question as to whether...
Oh, you mean if someone would choose not to come?
Somebody who might just not choose not to come simply because of it. I'm sure the company isn't giving you any statistics on that.
Right, we're checking ID anyway in all our schools. We just don't have a system for a database. So we're now checking driver's licenses at the elementary schools already. The other thing we talked about is, like, at FDR, if there's a play and 300 people are coming, they're not checking it then. Because it's sort of a public event, they're going right into the auditorium. It's used for visitors during the day who are going to move around the building, you know, not supervised. So that's why the safety is really important.
Okay. What's the cost of these units?
It's not expensive. I'm thinking about the whole district that we just did. It's $1,500 startup for a building and something like 800 or less.
It's 1,500 startup for each building, which includes that year's subscription. And then it's $400, I want to believe, every prior year.
So right now, FDR is only 400 for next year, and everyone else is 15, and then it'll go down to 4. So considering that we spend hundreds of dollars now on stickers and plastic things, and it's really just us saying, yeah, you say you are, but I don't know if that's a good person or not, to be in our building, and the panic button, which was too expensive for us to do when we looked into it as a separate thing.
So are we looking to roll it into all the other buildings, then?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah, and we've had conversations at all the safety teams and save teams and principals. The FDR save team was really instrumental in the protocols. How is this going to work and who's going to man it? So all the building safety teams are working on that for themselves. I mean, Havlin has that system, and we've, you know, have a person there already. And then the elementary schools are working out, you know, how that's going to happen in the office.
I guess one last question. In the high school, there's a monitor right there at the door. Will that be true of all the elementary schools?
No, right now, the secretary, one of the secretaries in the office signs people in. It'll be a building secretary, and there's already, the computers are already there that could make this work.
Okay, that wasn't the last question.
Okay.
But now I forgot what it was.
There we go. I said it was a senior moment, but you're young.
Did I, is this being purchased through a BOSI's coser, or is it just straight?
No, it was a lot more money through BOSI's. So we're just going right to the vendor.
Okay.
That was the last question.
I should mention, actually, a related note, that incident command training that you're talking about, we're going to be doing in June for all the administrators.
Good job.
Follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Bob Bloom does it. He's a trainer of it.
Yep.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like a motion to enter public participation, please.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, we're now in public participation. Anybody who would like to address the board, please step forward to the mic.
Put this down a little bit. My name is Lynn Keefe, and I'm from the town of Clinton. This is my second visit here. Actually, it's my third, because we made a mistake last night. My husband and I were here thinking that last night was the right night, and it wasn't. And I guess the reason that we thought that is that it was budget input. And what I wanted to say has to do with the budget to a degree. I think we all know that when the RAR comes out March 1st, that that figure is pretty close to what you're going to get for an equalization rate coming in May. And the RAR that came out March 1st was for the town of Hyde Park, 63.66. And you would expect from that that we might have an equalization rate pretty similar to what we had last year, which is really scary to the people in my town. And I have to explain for those that I haven't, that haven't heard me say it before. Two years ago, our taxes went up 9.4%, and last year, they went up another 9%. And in two years, in dollars to my husband and myself, that's $1,338 on top of our school tax bill. That's a big jump. Now, one of those years, Hyde Park went down 1%, and the next year, they went up 1%. So you're marking time, and we're going up. It's gotten to the point, and I'm not for this, so don't get nervous, but a lot of people, there's a petition going out. People in Clinton are starting to think about, if you're ready for this, starting their own school district to get away from these school taxes, because we're paying it all. You guys aren't paying, but there's a bad note to this, too. And one thing I wanted to talk about because of this equalization rate. I was into the county first. Second was Mr. Paul Wayne, who listened to my husband and I at length. Anyone I've spoken to has been very helpful. I can't complain about anyone or anything. Been to the state. Victoria Costello was sick of listening to me. Day before yesterday, figured I'm going to the school board because I'm going to say what I'm going to say. I better go in and talk to the assessor in Hyde Park, because she's probably not going to like what I'm about to say. So I did, and I met a young girl I'd never met before, and she was a delight. I was very, I was taken back at what went on. What I told her was exactly this. I requisitioned, I filled out a foil, and the state sent me the paperwork for the study that was used to give your town the equalization rate of 62% last year. Now, the study went from July 1st, 2011, through June 30th, 2012. I went through all of the sales that were used, plus I had also, from the county, the entire list of all sales, even those that weren't used. So I had a lot to look at. And what I came up with is nine sales that I felt should not have been used in the study at all, because they were not arms-length sales. Then, it's a new term now, they call them short sales. And I said this to the girl, and I said, now, out of 82 sales, I have nine, and I've spoken to real estate people, I can back up what I'm saying, that shouldn't have been used. That's 9%. That would have affected your equalization rate last year had it been done. And the young girl said to me, but the state does that. They fine-tune it. And I said, mm-mm. The state's telling me they don't do that anymore. They take what you sent. That's gossip. And she said, oh, my God. She said, I have people coming in from Hyde Park telling me their taxes are so high. What you're showing me is awful. This is terrible. She said, now, wait, if I can get my list back from the state, I think we have until April 15th, would you, would you work with me? Would you help me? I don't know how you did it, but... I said, yes, I would do that. I certainly would do that. So I'm telling you that there might be hope for us in Clinton. But after the fact, I discovered something else, and this is not in your favor, all of you who live in Hyde Park. While your tax dollars are remaining the same, your property values are going down, and they're going down rapidly.
Yes, they are.
And I'm going to give you an example that I discovered yesterday. I haven't even spoke to this new assessor about. To me, this is frightening. All right. There was a... All right. There was a house that closed, closed on May 31st, 2012. It was an arms length sale and it sold for $965,000. One month later, its full value was dropped to 583,000. Sold one month before for $965,000. The following year, this year, it's now valued at 508,000. It's paying school taxes on 508,000. And my husband and I, whose house is worth nothing, like 965, are paying the same school taxes. So this guy might think he's in great shape because his school taxes aren't too bad. But look what's happened to his property value. Go home and look at your bills. It's on every bill and each year. As a matter of fact, one of the real estate people that helped me, I know pretty well, is Frances Chu. And she has a beautiful home. And I said, Frances, you know, what's happening is this. And she said, I never thought of it. And she's helped me a lot backing up sales and different things. I sold real estate for years, haven't been active in years. But I do have support from people that I did work with. And she said, I never thought of it that way. So I'm just telling you that if I do work with the young girl, maybe we will get the equalization rate lower. I think had I worked with it a year ago, it never would have hit 62 because I know I could have done something to lower that figure and that would help we in the town of Clinton. But I am also advising you to watch your, how do I say, your property values. I think it's frightening myself. But we can't afford for this to keep going on. I'm a little nervous, so I hope I said all I wanted to say and I thank you all for listening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board?
Bill Gannon, Town of Clinton. Yesterday, I received a phone call from Lynn. And after all the times I've talked about the problem. And Lynn lives right down the road from me. So we got two people on our same road doing the same thing. And the other guy that's got the petition going up lives right down the road from me. And he's a retired teacher trying to start a whole new school district. Because he's saying the town of Clinton can support a whole new school, you know? But the main thing is, I've been talking, you know, for years how, since Hyde Park's not at 100% equalization rate, homes are selling down by the river for $1 million. And they're, they have to pay the previous assessed values and that's the problem. If they were at 100%, like done a reval, any house that sold to Hyde Park would pay what it sells for. And it would be fair for the people in the town of Hyde Park and for the people in the other towns. You know, but the thing is, I contacted the state last night by email. And the head guy I've been talking to, he's been telling me about arm length sales, teaching me there's checks and balances. Well, evidently, there is no checks and balances because when this new assessor was hired in training with the other one that left at Hyde Park, that's when our rates started to really, the tax levy got pushed to other towns. So there is a problem and I don't know, you know, what to do. I mean, I can't do anymore. So this is going to be like my last time talking about it and hopefully maybe Lynn can take over. You know, and the other thing I wanted to mention too is, I was sitting here when you were talking about the track. It's kind of hard to believe. 47 years ago, I ran in that track when it was built. And it was such an improvement going from Haviland to a track. And I remember sneaking into school when it was being built. And Hyde Park had the first basketball courts, I mean, the backboards that were plexiglass. And those basketball players became, I mean, I can't think of his name, okay, Rich Rinaldi, Greg Coles. Okay, this other guy, Bowsu, he just passed away. And these are kids that I grew up with and, you know, back then you used to sneak into the back door with a piece of wire, you know, so. So these kids were, you know, they couldn't believe, you know, and look at the impact that it had on them. And to me, I haven't really seen the track yet, you know, with the build, you know, I've been, you know, busy with other things in my life. And, but I was just sitting here 47 years ago and then 46 years ago, I used to run the mile and the half mile. And in 68, Hyde Park had the first DCSL track meet.
Yeah, Bill, weren't they a lot shorter in your, when you were?
What, the track meet? Oh, me? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was a lot shorter.
Oh, I thought you were talking about me personally. No, because when I graduated, I was like four foot nine. I went in the Navy, Vietnam, and I came home like 5'10". People didn't know where it was. I mean, about three meals a day. But the thing is, I mean, I was sitting here reminiscing, you know, how all this time flies by. You know, and then you're talking about an ID of a badge and here I am thinking, you know, where the years go by, you know? But the main thing is, those kids are going to be excited. I know I was four grass, you know, but I can't wait to see the track. And it's going to have a big impact on the kids. And maybe 50 years from now, they're going to be sitting here, if Hyde Park is still here. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Anybody else like to address the board? We have a motion to exit public participation, please.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. I did, Bill was kind enough to send me a note, so I, I did hear, hear your information before and it is scary. There's no question about it. And thank you for bringing it up. We have a small problem in that we create a budget before the equalization rate comes out. And so we do the best we can. And that's, it's, it sounds like an excuse and it actually is an excuse. But, you know, in those two years that your tax rate went up 9%, that wasn't supposed to happen. When we did the budget, for instance, last year, everybody's tax rate was supposed to be 3%, 3%. And it would have been, except the state changed the equalization rate. And that, that pushed the, the burden onto other towns. And
Well, that, that combined also.
And it's hard, it's hard for us to, to fix that.
It really isn't the state. It used to be the state. This young girl, Barbara State, who's going to find out what she sent up.
Okay, we, we can't have a, ma'am, we can't have a conversation. I do, I get your point. And definitely the town has to do something.
Yeah, I think I would just add to that too because Lynn brought up a very good point that it, it's not just the equalization rate, but it's also the property values in Hyde Park. Because that's, Wayne had pointed out to us when he went through the exercise in August that it was a, it was a kind of a
Went down 9 million last year.
It's a perfect storm of not only the equalization rate, you know, being so off kilter from the other four towns, but also the fact that the Hyde Park property values dropped significantly. And so consequently, all, that shifted also to the other towns. So, you know, I just want to make, you know, two, two points. One is, you know, we've, we've had this discussion, you know, and while we represent the entire school district and unfortunately don't represent, you know, don't control what happens in the town. I do think we need to either get a meeting with the town of Hyde Park or, or, you know, as a, as a board. I don't even, you know, it's not that, certainly Wayne and Greer should be part of that meeting. But I don't think that's something where we send the emissaries to them. We're the elected officials and I think, you know, we're going to have to stand up and be counted and, and confront them on, you know, what do we do about this? Because, you know, we, we obviously represent, Hyde Parkers are the, the largest constituency of ours. But we represent really everybody in the district that, that lives in all five towns, you know? So I think we really need to take a look at, because this, this really can't go on. It's difficult for us. It puts pressure on us. It, it makes people have to make decisions about the school district that they probably wouldn't otherwise make, but really their pocketbook forces them to make it. And I can't say I blame them. But it kind of pits us against the citizens of the other towns when, you know, we're both looking at it, you're going, yeah, but it's not our fault. And, but I also understand that especially in this economy and the way times are today, that you vote with your pocketbook. And the second point I wanted to make is I did hear rumblings of, of a petition for a school district. I'll say this, I think anybody has a right to do whatever they, they want to do. It doesn't offend me personally. But I would just state as a matter of course that you're not going to see New York State approve another school district. They're, they're going for less, not more. I would argue that there's probably too many school districts in Duchess County, to be honest with you. You know, that's probably a scary thing to say out loud. But when you start looking around, you know, and not to pick on my friends to the north, they're great, sorry Perry. But I mean, would you really, does Rhinebeck and Red Hook, for example, need to be separate? Or, or, you know, you know, Wapins, yeah, that's pretty gigantic. I think they do okay by themselves. Does Dover and, and either Dover and Weebetuck or Dover and Pauling, should they be separate? I mean, you got a lot of these small districts or Dover and Millbrook, God forbid. But, you know, a lot of small districts that, you know, in the big scheme of things over time in New York State, you're going to probably see. Yeah, I'll just make them one. Thank God they don't see this on their TV at home. But really, that, that's the reality.
There was one.
You know, you know, New York State in general, I think, wants to eliminate a lot of different forms of government. You know, and I always argue, I don't, one thing, you know, for all the things people can complain about Hyde Park, the one thing I'm really grateful for is that, you know, way back when, we never formed like an incorporated village. That's just total duplication of effort and services. And you look at a Rhinebeck and a Red Hook and a Tibbly and some of these places, like, what do you need a village on top of a town for? You know, I mean, so that's, that's the direction New York State, I think, is going to go in to start chopping away at a lot of these duplication of efforts. And I think school districts are right there with them, to be honest with you. Anyway, that's just my own view of the world.
Kevin, in the past, we, we, you know, on the board, we've all had the same, the same thought. But there's nothing we can do except to mention to the town that this great inequity exists and continues to perpetuate and is creating issues. But from the town's perspective, the same, we don't have the, what was it, $700,000 to do a
800.
$800,000 to do a reval. You know, they don't have the money to do it. And in truth, they're not getting in trouble. They've got all the benefits they want. They can override their, the tax cap simply by having the, the elected members, not the public, but the elected members vote for the higher budget. There's no other benefit for them to reeval at this point. And we've, we have nothing to bring to them. I'm just wondering about what Linda just brought up about this property values. You know, if, if this is such a big deal and it's, and it's affecting all the, all the people in Hyde Park, the individual voters, and saying, you know, when, when it comes time to sell my property or move out or something like that. Over the years, I've been short, you know, my, my value's gone down and down and down. And it could have been improved if we had done a reeval. We need some wedge, some talking point to talk to the town and say, hey, you know, you're not skating by free of charge all along. You thought you may be and you've gone that way, but there's something going on in the background that it eventually is going to cause an upswell, it's going to create a problem, and you need to look at that, you know? Because that's been, you know, that's the crux of their, their issue. They don't have the money in their budget to call, to pay for a reval. The state obviously hasn't indicated any willingness to come in and somehow provide a pool to have the towns reeval every five years or whatever it is. So, you know, there's no pressure for the people that need to authorize it to do it. They're not the ones getting pounded by Clinton voters or Rhinebeck voters or Red Hook voters. They have nothing to do with it, you know? So we're in sort of a no man's land. We, we've always needed a wedge and if we can find one, that'd be terrific.
But I, but I think, you know, the point was made and that there is a lot of truth to what both Lynn and Bill said. That there is, you know, there probably is a need to do a revaluation because Dan, people like you, me, probably almost everybody on this table that if we own a house, that it may very well be that if they do a revaluation, you find out your taxes are going to actually drop a little bit because we're probably not where we're supposed to be. I found out the hard way trying to refinance my house.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'll, I'll point out that, you know, obviously something has changed. And I mean, and I'm hearing it now that the town assesses can't make any changes. When the house sells for a certain amount, that has nothing to do with the fact you have to carry over the prior assessment. When I moved into Hyde Park, I moved into a development that had been completed about eight years before and in which every house on my block had been purchased three years earlier from when I bought the house. I moved in with the smallest house on the block, paid not a large amount for the house. But when it came time to put it on the assessment rolls, the way they did it then was they simply went to the county, got a, got a notification or a document saying, here's the tax stamps that were paid on that sale. They converted that back to the selling price and that's how my house was entered on the tax rolls. So I was paying 30% more in taxes than any of my neighbors, yet I had, the closest house to mine was some 25% bigger.
Yeah, they're not, they're not allowed to do that anymore.
No, they're not allowed to do it. It's gone the other way.
Yeah, they used to call that welcome neighbor. And they're not, they're not allowed to do that anymore.
But, you know, now we're going the other way. But there's somewhere, somehow, if people wanted to, there's ways of rectifying this. I mean mandated realignments every so often or, you know, there are other things that can be done. I mean, when they first, I don't know how many you remember, and I've said this before too. When we did the last reassessments, when we went through and did a reassessment of the entire town, one of the selling points was it was going to be entered into a computer program where all of the information that was taken, this time would be available, square footage, nature of the building, the types of foundations, the types of finishes. They said, so if nothing else, he said, five years from now, we could do a reeval by just rerunning the numbers, the, the, the basic factors of the house against new numbers and come up with a different value. That was never done and it's not, and obviously now it's prohibited from being done. So the only way you can get a reeval is to pay for it, paying for a crowd to come in and redo the whole thing all over again.
Okay. The, to be fair, Aileen Rohr did contact me and ask for a meeting on this, on the reevaluation. However, this is new information, which I'm glad that we know this now, that we can discuss it. But either way, if it, if we do a budget and it gets, then the equalization is equalized, shall we say, we're going to have a lot of unhappy people because we're going to tell them, this is what your tax is going to be and then it's going to be different. But it's necessary in this case, I think. Okay, I'd like to move on to the board discussion. Recently, the, the school district was contacted by Catherine Maloney. It was president of the Duchess County Economic Development Corporation to ask us if we would do a pilot program for the Taylor Tool Company. They are a manufacturer. They have a factory on Parker Avenue. They want to expand their business and move to a vacant building on Salt Point Turnpike across from that cemetery there.
Doug, just quick, I think we should make sure that everybody understands that a pilot is
A pilot is payment in lieu of taxes. Sorry. Very good. Thank you. So anyway, Wayne and I met with Ms. Maloney, Todd Tran Greenie, town supervisor, town of Poughkeepsie, Michael Burdis, who's the president of Taylor Tool Company, and Neil Wilson, the director of municipal development. What they proposed was a 10-year freeze of taxes on the new property. And we had a discussion. The one thing that they didn't understand was that, that's a, a pilot is something that voted on by the board and not, they wanted to deal with the superintendent. That's why we had the meeting. So we had a long discussion. I explained kind of the realities of how school financing goes and how important school taxes are. And we learned, Wayne and I learned a number of facts. One, the, the business wants to move because they already have been offered money to sell their property to make way for a new jail. So they're getting a good deal on selling their property. The town of Poughkeepsie is very interested in them moving to the new property, so they dropped their assessment by $500,000. Wayne and I figured, well, Wayne figured it, that over a 10-year period at just 2%, that's, that's a $365,000 savings right there. So I, I felt that, because of a lot of reasons, that this was not a good deal for the school district. And I asked them to consider a different plan, come up something more creative, certainly not 10 years. I pointed out that, you know, a lot can happen in 10 years. Things could double in inflation. It doesn't, so. We ended the meeting and they went off and they were going to think about coming back with a, a different, a different plan. So at this, at this time, I don't think we, we have to vote on a pilot or we don't have to. I just wanted to give you a heads up as to just wanted to, to give you a heads up as to where this is, um, I, it would have to be pretty creative before I would agree to it, and so.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, I just, my, my thoughts, you know, and especially in light of the rather, uh, robust but controversial conversation we had about the veterans' tax exemption, you know, it's really no different, you know, you, we end up shifting, you know, tax burden, you know, if we're not allowed to, you know, if, if, whatever the pilot is, if it's not the full, uh, tax value that we can collect on that property, it's, you know, it's, you know, whatever we have to raise as part of the tax levy in our budget, if we get X amount less from them, we have to get it from everybody else, and, you know, as I've, as I pointed out, it's, uh, you know, pilots are usually, they have to do, generally speaking, they're part of economic development, and, you know, you generally have, okay, somebody's moving into the area, and, uh, they haven't been here before, and oh, by the way, they're gonna bring a hundred, two hundred, three hundred, five hundred jobs, you're, you're moving a, a, a handful of jobs from the city of Poughkeepsie, probably two, three miles as the crow flies, to a new location, this does nothing for us, or, or, I meant, I don't mean for us, but for the area, I mean, it makes no difference to the area, one way or the other, whether this happens or not, I, I mean, I really wouldn't be in favor of, of something like this, unless I get substantial, you know, like, um, you know, contribution to, um, the, the local economy, and, you know, you know, you start talking about adding a lot of real jobs, then I could be interested in something like that, but not otherwise.
Kevin, does, even if, even if they added real jobs, uh, because of it, that doesn't necessarily translate into more taxes for us, it would translate into taxes for us only if they bought and raised the value of properties in the area.
Right, but no, the, the, the argument is, is that, and again, I talk about substantial, I'm not talking about a small handful of jobs, but if you had, if you had a manufacturing firm just drop out of the sky and say, boy, if you give us a pilot, we're gonna come in with, you know, three hundred really high-paying, good jobs, you know, that's something that a government agency, whether it's a town, a county, or, or a, a school district thinks long and hard about, because you say, okay, well, we gotta spread the burden of taxes around on everybody else, but look what you get for it, and, but moving a handful of already existing jobs from one point, point A to point B, that doesn't do it for me, and, and I, you know, and I think that's what you have to really look at, you know, um, but, but you, you're, you're kind of like talking about, well, because you're saying, well, they obviously are gonna be paying something, they're not gonna pay nothing, but they're paying something, but it might be less than their tax bill would be, but the argument is, yeah, but I'm, I'm gonna bring three, you know, three, just as an example, three hundred jobs into the area, and somebody weighs that and says, yeah, well, the, the tax break isn't really that big of a deal to pass along on everybody else for a benefit like that, geez, maybe a couple of our taxpayers knock on the, the door and get a job there, that's actually a good thing, it's, you know, it goes on a lot, but there's been a lot of these around the county, and they, they've been faulted, the, the, the IDA had been faulted before for, you know, and audits that, you know, some of these pilots that have gone on for large corporations, who shall remain nameless, but dominate the county, that, you know, didn't necessarily deliver the jobs that they said they were gonna deliver, and they got pilots for, so, you know, this stuff, you gotta be real careful with it, but a, as currently proposed, or, you know, unless I hear something really radically different from that perspective, I'm not interested in it.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure that, uh, I could, I gave you the information that we got on Monday, and it certainly wasn't executive, uh, session material, so I had to put on the, uh, discussion, so if we could move on to, uh, unfinished business, nine point one, I have a motion to adopt policy seven thousand, facilities development goals.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can anybody just describe the background, where this modification came from, or what inspired this, uh, policy change, I mean, I'm just, you know, I, I, I see the change, I read it, um.
A lot of the stuff sometimes comes from the School Boards Association, these are recommended changes, right? And I'm not a positivity, but that one kind of looks like it was.
Well, this one, we've had on the books, uh, this is new.
No, but the one change.
The change, uh, was actually proposed by Elliot.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was, uh, um, because of, uh, he felt that there should be some mention of, uh, um, regular inspections and architectural inspection, so, um, it's a minor change.
Okay.
All right. Um, all those in favor? Thank you. And I have a motion on, um, ten point, or, yeah, ten point O, the consent agenda, as stated in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'd like to wish everybody listed that is retiring, a, a happy retirement, I'm certainly enjoying my, my retirement, so I'm hoping everybody else has a good time when they retire also.
Maybe they can join the school board.
And, and especially, uh, I'd like to mention Mr. Doyle, I've spent a number of, uh, days in his classroom, uh, when I did, uh, engineering days, and reading and things like that, and I always enjoyed being in his classroom, so I'll be sorry to see him go, not that I'm sorry, not sorry to see everybody else go, but I, Bill is just somebody I really like, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of experience that is going out, and wish everybody well, I actually started calculating to figure out just how many years it got beyond me.
Right.
Well, I, just one other name I'd like to mention, again, it's my association with Ralph R. Smith, you were talking earlier about the string concerts and stuff like that, well, Edith Stratton is retiring, and she's the one that brought string instruments into the district, and has nurtured it up to a point where, you know, I saw the performance up at the high school, the area one at the high school for the middle schools.
That was, that was good, yeah.
And that was absolutely outstanding, and it was funny, because I had one of, we keep talking about those senior moments, I had a senior moment in reverse, I actually had a senior moment while I was sitting there listening to these kids play, of my sitting on a chair in the Ralph R. Smith Auditorium, listening to the first performances of the string groups, and like you said, it was painful.
I don't, I don't-
It was painful for the group, because you couldn't go ahead and say, well, here's what it's gonna be like eight years from now.
She, she's done a great job, and I, so I don't wanna, um, don't wanna, uh, put that down by correcting you, but since he just passed away, actually, it was Ruben Bennett, um, who was a longtime string teacher.
Oh, my God, I had him.
He, he brought the strings to Hyde Park.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, he was, he predated her, yeah, Edith Stratton started in September of eighty-nine, I mean, Ruben Bennett started in Hyde Park in the sixties.
You're not that old, Kevin, somebody had to tell you that.
Oh, I, I watched him, I, I was in, I, yeah, he came around with the vibes when I was in elementary school, and tried to get, encourage kids to play, he, he just passed away, that's what made me think of him, yeah, just a couple weeks ago.
Then I'll say that the experience I've had only dates back to nineteen, uh.
So it is a senior moment.
I'm trying to think, sixty-one, it must've been sixty-nine.
Maybe just a mid-age moment.
Yeah, no, he's, he's just a young kid.
By two days, you gotta be smart about that.
Okay, uh, all those in favor? Opposed, I didn't think, okay, so now we're down to- eleven point one, may I have a motion for special education placements?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, just a brief summary, we had ten presented to us by the CPSEs, uh, those are the preschoolers, uh, two students were being declassified, seven students will continue through next year with the same kinds of services, and one student was, uh, presented and, as a new student, and was classified, at the CSE level, which is the K through, uh, twelfth grade that we deal with on a daily basis, and it, uh, we provide the services for, we had a total of thirty-three IEP-type presentations or meetings we were voting on, uh, for students regarding their current year reviews of programs and stuff like that, that resulted in identification of three students that exited, four students were being declassified, two students that transferred into the district were gonna receive services, uh, one manifested determination, and two five oh four behavior plans, and, um, we also had eighty-three, uh, meetings that, that were dealing with next year's programs, all of those students are gonna be continued, and fourteen of those students, as, as of this year, will continue to receive services and out placements next year.
Thank you, Dan, all those in favor? Opposed, thank you, may I have a motion for eleven point two, proposition to be presented to the qualified voters of the district?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just point out, this is a placeholder for when we have the final, um, numbers that we added, uh, all those in favor? And nobody's opposed, I hope, uh, bring this to thirteen, eleven point three, legal notice for annual district meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, thank you, eleven point four, capital project allowance, access authorization and change orders, as listed in the, uh, in the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, just a couple of quick questions, just to get status, are we, do we have substantial completion been filed for the, for the project at this point?
Yeah, well, actually, we're working on it right now.
Okay.
Kinda don't have a choice, because the building aid is there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you gotta move on it.
So we, we, we have all plans to file by June thirtieth.
Okay, um, does this seem like it's gonna kind of finish up the, the financing side of it, that everything is done that has to be done, I mean, there's some allowances here that are being returned, so it suggests that there's no more work under those primes?
There's still work to go.
There is still work.
But it's, you know, definitely, we're on top of it, um, the punch lists are getting much, much smaller, and certificates of substantial completion are coming in regularly.
Okay.
So, with all intentions, we're looking to close out on all of our three A projects, uh, June thirtieth.
Fully under budget, I mean, it looks like we must be under budget, we're getting return on allowances here, so, um, good job to everyone.
Thank you.
Uh, Wayne, just because we've mentioned the fact that we've got the first track meet coming up on April seventh, and I know that at the, as, as the weather window closed last year, we had some additional work to do on some of the outlying facilities at the track, the, uh, the jumping and throwing facilities and stuff like that, I can't anticipate that we've had much opportunity to get those completed up till now, um, are we gonna be able to get those into a usable condition for the track meet on the seventh?
The intention's to have it done in the spring, so everything is-
Yeah, the, the spring hasn't arrived yet, and yet it's, you know, three weeks late or something like that, my, my concern, just as we talked about it, was the fact that we got the meet coming up in less than two weeks, and I know there was some work to still be done at those points, I'm just wondering, I don't know the nature of the work, and maybe the work isn't necessary to, uh, provide for supervised use for the events, but, uh-
Some, some of the outstanding things are like the, uh, the logo, um.
Yeah, I, I know some of the stuff that it is, and a couple of other things to be cleaned up, I just wanna, hopefully somebody's gonna run through the list and make sure there's nothing there that, uh, that says, like, the, uh, the marking bar for the shot putting is, isn't in place, or the, uh, the other things that we need, the, the stanchions to put the pole, the pole vault in, you know, the things that we're gonna need to run that event, I think we might warrant running through that before, because otherwise, our poor guy up there, our coach up there, is gonna have a real heart attack, he's close to it right now, and he's only in his mid twenties, and he's getting green around the gills, and I'm not sure he's eating a good meal in a week, but-
Oh, really?
Ryan, we're rooting for you.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, thank you very much, at this time, may I have a motion to re-enter public participation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, we are now in public participation, if anybody would like to, uh, address the board, please step up to the mic.
I'd just like to clarify one more thing, uh, a five hundred thousand dollar home in Clinton used to be a seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar home in Hyde Park, because since they don't reassess, the assessed values always stay the same, and then the equalization rates change to change your market value, okay, that's why when you get your taxes, if you don't look at what your market value is, you don't really know your house is dropping in value, you know, but it's a big problem, and, you know, and I don't blame, you know, anybody, but I'm just glad right now, you know, 'cause I haven't heard too much from the state either, and I got the feeling, everybody knows about the problem, you know, and I've been told that they did off, you know, try to advise Hyde Park to take out a bond, okay, all the other towns are at a hundred percent, so we had to pay for it, too, that's what people don't realize, to make it fair for everybody, okay, it's not only for the people to live in Hyde Park to pay their fair share for their own property taxes, imagine Hyde Park's not paying their fair share for county taxes either, because if the taxes are at a hundred percent, I mean, the equalization rates in the other towns, it does make a big difference, you know, and to me, if I had a home in Hyde Park that I paid eight hundred thousand for, and I went home tonight, you know, I looked at my last tax bill, and I found out it was worth, you know, three fifty, I would be worried that I lost, but the problem is, these houses may still be selling for more money, so that means during that ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty-year period, these people ain't paying their fair taxes, and that's the problem, yeah, thank you.
But that's the answer to why they're not speaking either.
Right, that's the, yeah, you got that right, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, but would anybody else like to address the board? May I have a motion to close public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, I don't think Bill's expecting any kind of response from that question, but, uh, it, it's, it's, it's a tough one, Bill, it really is, it's, uh, it's not something that makes us happy, uh, not knowing, uh, what things are gonna be like after we, after we've already made, committed, and voted on a budget, and then have things change is, is, is concerning, it's, uh, but maybe, you know, there's always hope, maybe we can, maybe we can fix it, all right, um, board subcommittee reports.
We had a big, uh, meeting yesterday, only four of us there, but, uh, we went over a draft of the proposed budget, and Wayne gave us a chart of, uh, governor's proposals, senate, uh, proposals, and house proposals, and to review and see where they manned up, I don't know if he's got any information since, but I also was asked by Doug, I forgot his last name, a community member, Eggleton, Eggleson, that if we could add student cost into our package somehow, with a chart from this year or last year, and that, if there's a difference in cost per student, at his request, that's it.
Okay, hmm, um, what did we do in the policy?
Drugs, alcohol.
Oh, that's right, drug and alcohol, I'm sorry, yes, we did have a policy meeting, you know, I must've been on drugs at the time, and it was, it was on the drug and alcohol policy, and I believe we've cleaned up the wording so that it's clear, concise, and, uh, it, it, it's, um, there's no longer inconsistencies between the policy and the regulation.
Right, and will they appear on the next agenda?
The next, the next agenda, yeah.
All right.
Okay, we were gonna have a tech meeting, but that one got pushed off, so, upcoming meetings, the long list, oh, Wednesday, April second, well, let me start with, uh, Friday, March twenty-eighth.
Aladdin.
Is Aladdin at the middle school, and in, in case you're hungry beforehand, you can go over to Netherwood and partake of the spaghetti dinner. There you go, all right, those two, uh, on Wednesday, April second, the, uh, the facility staring forum, a meeting at five o'clock here at, in this building, Friday, April fourth, is the Top Twenty Dinner, what's that timer again, already, huh?
Yes.
Wow, um, it will be, uh, held at four, uh, sixth PM at the FDR High School Library, uh, Thursday, April tenth, is the board, next board meeting, it will be at seven o'clock at FDR High School.
We do have an upcoming, upcoming tech meeting, right, on this first, wasn't it the twentieth date?
Oh, yeah, did we nail that down completely? I'm not, I'm not sure everybody agreed yet, huh?
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, sounds right, yeah.
Okay, that is true.
That's Monday.
Monday.
It's a Monday, yeah.
Monday's the tech meeting, okay, um, moving on, Tuesday, April twenty-second, is a special board meeting to vote on Bosie's budget, six o'clock here at this, um, building.
And I, I guess I'll say that I just got the mailing for that, I'm really glad we actually nominated that guy, 'cause there's only two seats, and if we didn't, there would've only been two candidates, so, democracy at work.
Can I also mention that April twenty-second is also a superintendent's conference day, just as a reminder, because it wasn't in the calendar that was published last summer, the board made a change to the adoption of the calendar, and that was because, um, several, most of the districts- most of the districts in the county are participating in regional scoring of the grade three through eight ELA assessments, so that we aren't pulling large numbers of teachers over a two-week span. So April twenty-second, schools are closed. It is on the website, it's a superintendent's conference day.
Okay.
Doug, I just, one thing I noticed, and I, if I hadn't been looking at, I would've missed it, is the fact we're going on the road with a couple of our meetings.
Yes, we are.
First time of the year, so we had to-
Yes, we are.
Have to remember to pay attention to where it is.
That's exactly-
It wouldn't be like, if I showed up here, it wouldn't be the first time I showed up here when the meeting was somewhere else.
As an example, on Thursday, April twenty-fourth, is the Board of Education meeting, seven o'clock at Havillon Middle School.
Looks like the tent's at FDR.
And then Thursday, May eighth, is another Board of Education meeting, seven o'clock at Violet Avenue Elementary School, so.
And the meeting on a tent is at FDR.
Yeah. So we're going to all the, the schools as we can.
Hey, can I just go back for a second, since we're not locked into this? The BOSI's meeting on the twenty-second, do we have to do it at six? Can we do it earlier? And the only reason I ask is, you know, most-
Do it at two o'clock in the afternoon.
I know, exactly. It's a drive-through vote, I call it. 'Cause you come in, you vote, and leave. Well, no, 'cause, yeah, the reason why I said that is because, you know, most of these board meetings, because of the amount of materials we have to cover and exec, we're, we're convening at five thirty. And I mean, this is like a drive-through vote. You vote on the, on the board member and the budget, and you're out of here in ten minutes. So I'd be okay with five thirty, just get it over with and move on.
How about six thirty AM?
That works.
I could do that, too.
I could do it, too. Five thirty, is it okay with everybody? All right, we'll change it to five thirty.
Yeah, thanks.
And we'll send a note out.
No sense in hanging around until six for ten minutes, you know?
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Monday, May twelfth, is voter registration day, four to eight, eight, four PM to eight PM here in the administrative office. We have, wow, why do we have all these on, on the thing? You wanted to get all the voting, oh, okay.
But we, we don't have to read them all, I mean, we can be posted.
Well, what's with the, the voter ones? I mean, Monday, May twelfth, there's a public hearing on the budget, and meet the candidates tonight, and that will be here in the administration office. May twelfth is the last day to register to vote, for those of you that want to vote, and you should want to vote. And May twentieth will be the day of the vote, the budget vote. Six AM to nine PM at Havillon Middle School.
I also wanna add that the other timeline people should pay attention to is that we have seats open on the Board of Education. If anyone is interested to run, they can come and see Deb Rosen and pick up a packet. It, it, the procedure is listed on our website. So we have one incumbent running again, and one current board member who is not running again. So we encourage anybody interested in running for the Board of Education to please pick up a packet and pay attention to that timeline. We did put the timeline on the webpage as well, but again, we encourage people to participate, and if they're interested to, in running for the board, to come and get a packet.
Greer, to that point, just to say that the Dutchess County School Board Association is gonna be holding a prospective board members training on April twelfth over the, over the BOSI Center. I believe it's at nine AM. Do you have information on that, Tim? Okay. So that it'd be an opportunity for, even if you haven't picked up a packet, you can go to the training and check it out, find out a little more, a little bit more about, you know, what it means to be on the board, what the responsibilities are.
Great, thank you.
Okay. We have no need for an additional executive session, and I'm looking at the clock, and I'm thinking Glenn couldn't possibly take such time up, but he's not here, and we're ending early, so.
Well, we got Steve, too. It's not truly a scientific experiment, there's many variables.
I'm gonna blame it on Glenn. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.